I'll go ahead and call our workshop to order. First item is recognition of visitors. See some new faces out there, but you all are on the agenda. Anyone have anything to bring up that is not on the agenda? Next item is Loudoun County Solid Waste Commission.
Mr. Mayor, we have a number of guests here from the commission. First, I'd like to recognize Councilman Stewart for his hard work as the city's representative to the commission. Past four years, he's done a great deal of work and a lot of what we talked about tonight was that it's due in large part with all the hard work of Councilman Stewart. I'll introduce first the topic, which is the extension of an agreement with Santec, who operates our landfill and has under the current agreement, which has been in place since 2007. We're anxious to hear the end result of what's been a two-year negotiation and we believe this is going to put us in a better place, a better financial position for the long-term closure of the financial responsibility, financial liability associated with the closure of the landfill. Steve, you want to kick us off?
Yeah, my name's Steve Field. I have the dubious distinction of being the chairman of the Solid Waste Disponers Commission. I have a couple of my colleagues here, Barry Jamison and Kelly Wilton-Broster, who are also members of the board. Wanted to thank you for this opportunity to visit with city council and to lay out where we're at. What I was intending on doing is just introducing some of the topics and then I was going to ask Dennis to speak a little bit more about some of the details. But in terms of this negotiation that we've been going through, the main purpose of the negotiation is to address some of the shortcomings in the existing contract. We're not trying to renegotiate the whole contract, we're not trying to re-change the whole deal. We're looking at addressing some of the shortfalls in the existing contract. One of the main issues that we've been looking at is making sure that we have enough money for closure and post-closure of the landfill. And under the current agreement, the Solid Waste Commission has been accumulating the funds. However, we haven't been accumulating them at the correct rate because we picked the wrong rate. And again, these negotiations with Santec are being used to address that. One of the things to keep in mind about this, the closure of the landfill, is that the stakeholders are responsible for what they call post-closure care. And the amount of time that the landfill is under post-closure is a minimum of 30 years after we close it. And the additional cost to run the landfill is part of, again, part of the money that we want to secure to have in our funds available for that post-closure care period. We're also looking to have an additional $1.6 million in our funds for whatever Solid Waste Commission decides to do next in terms of the landfill. That's after this contract is closed. One of the principal things that we want to do with this current contract negotiation is to have Santec responsible and supply a schedule for when they were going to be closing parts of the landfill and how much acreage they were responsible for closing. Again, under the current contract, there wasn't any specific information about how much landfill Santec was going to close under the current contract or what the timeframe was. In this contract negotiation, we have a specific schedule and a specific amount of acreage that we're looking for Santec to close at their expense over this extended term. The other piece that's part of this puzzle is the height of the landfill. And Ty, though you live out in that area, you probably drive past the landfill every day, and I'm assuming you're pretty aware of where it is in terms of the elevation that the landfill is currently at. And one of the things that we are doing, again, as part of this negotiation, is addressing the maximum elevation of landfill. I'm going to throw some numbers out at you. Terms of the current landfill, it's about 1,070 feet, mean sea level. The current permitted maximum elevation is 1,108 feet. So that's a difference of 38 feet. Under this proposed classification that Santec has, they propose to build the landfill to a maximum height of 1,125 feet, which would be 55 feet taller than the current elevation. And part of this negotiation, again, is to reduce that maximum elevation to a proposed 1,098 feet, which is 28 feet taller than its current elevation. And when we reduce the maximum elevation of the landfill, the amount of garbage that you can put in that airspace is estimated to between 900,000 and a million cubic yards of garbage. So a lot of what Santec is doing in terms of negotiating with them about the terms of this negotiation is that potential loss of revenue for them losing about up to a million cubic yards of garbage. Again, the main focus of this is to address some of the shortfalls of the current contract, making sure that Santec is responsible for closing parts of the landfill and that we have adequate funding at the end of the process to be able to close what course we have to close and, again, have an additional $1.6 million in the bank after it's all over and done. If I can ask Dennis to speak to the issues, because Dennis has been one of our strong advocates to make sure we hold Santec accountable, and I'll just turn over to Dennis.
Well, there's no way I'd ever have any kind of knowledge that Steve has. It's amazing the knowledge that they have and this stuff. These people are a lot smarter than I am, Steve and him. Basically, what happened is to me, while I was Kelly and Larry showed up one day and said that they were having problems with Santec or whatever with negotiations, they were about to extend so many years on to a contract and they were not adding enough money to even get close to coming to those shortfalls. And they set something about $9 million short. So that's when I took on it and the mayor put me on there. And we know, you know, as you started looking at everything, it was a bad contract. I mean, you can understand that. There's a lot of people mad about the contract, but you could read through it, it's pretty cut and dry and that's the way it was. They wasn't know what you could do about it or anything. So they started this negotiation and tried to get some of that $9 million back because at the end of it, they really didn't have to close anything, right? I mean, they didn't have to close nothing. And as I read through that, they didn't even have to meet before with their logger told them they didn't intend to close anything. They could just go on and just keep scattering that garbage out and never close it because they said it never got to the elevation, they just going to let it settle. They didn't have to close any of it. So I think, in my opinion, I don't like landfill, period, but I think some of it you probably got to have. But to me, over negotiation, we just kept going and we, you know, we set a dollar amount out that I didn't think they'd even come close to, and they did, and they kind of matched it, you know, we kind of understood they're making a lot of money. And after all the contract negotiations, I really felt that this right here was probably the best we were going to be able to do. And they were going to be able to close some of it, you know, a lot more of it. And it just, to me, financially, it was a smart thing to do and it extends five years and, you know, over the contract. The one thing I do have a problem with, and this is you all, this, you know, I think Tuesday night will probably be my last meeting, as much as I love trash, I'm very much done with politics. In my opinion, there's got to be something in that contract that says that they have to have that money in there. Right now, they're saying that you've got to, this is all based on 600 ton and we ain't been getting 600 ton. And I don't know that we'll ever get 600 ton. So my other thing is, you know, you look at y'all's self, I think it's the best I could possibly come up with or Kelly and Larry and all of us together that could come up with. I thought it was a pretty good deal from where we started at, but I don't want to come up to the end of this thing again and a logger go, you know what, that little girl was stupid, you know? And I don't want to be that, so I'm just telling you, there needs to be something in there to make sure that that takes, all takes place instead of just saying, you know, well, we didn't quite get the 600 ton. To me, that's where I stand at. Any other questions, I can give Steve a little. He's the man that understands cubic yards of garbage and I pretty much just thought you threw it in the trash can and see you came by and got it. I don't know where it went from there, but if you were a win, I didn't know why it got there. So what was Dave?
I think it's a good plan. We had a great pre-meeting with Councilman Stewart, the mayor, and Steve and the commission's attorney, Kevin. And one thing to keep in mind, and I say this as a resident and a neighbor of this facility, is there's a map included in your packet and there's, the landfill is never as large as the map at any single point in time. There's just a cell or two open that's being operated and then a cell, a cell or two is closed as it's filled. And that's very comforting because when you, when you think about having all that liability at once, it's a big number. But when you look at what this plan entails, Councilman Stewart and the team put in place, it's a phased closure plan. And when you think about a cell at a time, you know, we're eating this elephant one bite at a time rather than dozens of acres all at once.
Is the contract extension, I mean, they, that's, they want the contract extension? Is any of it married?
Well, I mean, at this point in time, we've gone back and forth with Santec over this extended period and we're still negotiating. We don't have a final agreement, we have a number of points that I think we could both agree to. You know, again, we're looking for input from our stakeholders. You know, are there issues that you have with this framework? Because it's still, you know, we don't have a contract, we have a framework that we're working towards a contract. The other thing I might encourage you to think about is as, once we do have a final document, do you folks want to, obviously, you're going to have a lot of people to review it, how do you want to convey your satisfaction or dissatisfaction or unhappiness to the board in terms of how we move forward on this negotiation? If that's just something that you all can, you think about. But again, we have a framework. If there's some piece of it that you're not, that you think we need to do different, you know, we're looking for some feedback.
Well, I think this is a transition period on the council and what we'll do is bringing new members to the council up to speed and keep them apprised of any change in the negotiation process. But I think we're moving forward right now.
I say one thing, oh yeah. We're all, you know, kind of old, our families grew kind of young, but, I mean, I wouldn't get no more landfills at Loudoun, let alone if we'd have this nation.
I think one of our main goals, too, is we want to go back and be able to voice what each entity actually wants. We've kind of had a split on county commission as far as several of them want to see us write a contract out and then start from there and do negotiations at that point. And some of them say that this is a good deal. I agree, there's language in this contract that we still need to work on, but our main goal is we need feedback from each of the entities so that we can get the best deal that everyone agrees upon.
What if we don't hit the 641 tons per day? Is there a charge or?
There's supposed to be annual evaluations, you know, it's supposed to adjust it as it goes. So where'd you want our blood?
If we never hit that, what do we normally hit as far as tonnage?
Well, the tonnage has been up to over 800 tons a day in the past. The tonnage fluctuates every month, it's probably in the 450 to 500 tons per day right now. But I guarantee you, Santec has salesmen that lay awake at night trying to figure out how they can ensnarl more garbage to come to the landfill.
Sure, we're taking more county's garbage.
They'll, I mean, they take as much as we can get, as much as they can drive. Garbage is a commodity and there's a lot of people that are competing for that commodity. It's all about dollars and cents. And if somebody wants to give you that service for a nickel less, you know, people will change because they're interested in their bottom line. But the part of this negotiation that Dennis alluded to is that there's going to be an annual adjustment to look at that rate of money that we're going to get, realizing that this 600 tons a day or whatever it is, it's an estimate. It's not, it's not designed to be cast in stone. It's just something that is a target for estimation purposes.
Yeah, it's given 173,000 tons per year, so maybe that's the number they look at annually.
But again, the idea is that this, these negotiations are trying to establish a framework that has some flexibility. And again, we're addressing shortcomings in the existing contract to try to get to that point where we have some flexibility, have some annual adjustments, yet have some goals at the end that are solid, like how much money the board is going to have at the end of the term of the contract, that 1.6 million, and how much of the landfill Santec is responsible for closing.
How much we will be responsible for closing also.
Right.
For post closure.
Yes, and to answer your question, too, yes, we have been far below 640 tons for a long time.
It's karma.
Have they got a contract like this similar to any other entity?
Most of the landfills, they own it. Most of the time, they own the landfill, so they close it. This is the only one that they don't own, am I right?
Most of the landfills, they, Santec doesn't own any of the landfills. They typically operate the landfill for what they call a life of the facility. And most of those agreements where they have the life of the facility, they offered that to us as well, but the board rejected it. The life of the facility would probably, assuming we go through with this expansion as opposed, would probably last to 2040 or maybe 2050. And, you know, in terms of the, you know, the, I think the board felt very uncomfortable entertaining a really long-term deal like that. If, you know, if our stakeholders were interested in something like that, Santec would prefer that.
Is that off the table?
They get the landfill, they close it all, everything, they make a lot of money.
Larry, when you negotiated most of the contract, and did they say this was their final offer?
Yes. And again, it's negotiations. I mean, they said that this was the final offer, but as Steve has alluded to, there is still a lot of unanswered bullet points here that's not set in stone. But back to the real question about Loudoun County, Loudoun County, if I'm not mistaken, ranges from 15 to 18 percent. It floats up and down about a county waste that comes in. And there's the 482, I think's been our average for a while, somewhere along in there, so.
That's taken in Loudoun County stuff even at that.
Even at that.
So we don't take any more to get it up to?
That's taken a month.
And even, and the thing that you've got to understand is it's, if you take in more, yes, it helps, but it also hurts. So, you know, there's a lot of opposition and like Steve said, we don't want to do anything that the stakeholders is not willing to step forward. And going forward with this contract is going to require the stakeholders' input.
I think what they're wanting to know is, would this be something you want them to continue to keep working on or are you just dead set against something like this more to ride it out? I mean, you know, I think that's what they're after. Before they spend all this time, is this something that the council, you may be a month early.
Because we are talking about the expansion of the contract, you know, expansion of 26 acres.
Looking to expand it 26 more acres?
Yeah. We can do the contract if we're to expand.
But that was, was that part of the original footprint? That expansion?
It's beyond the original, it's beyond the permitted footprint, the current permitted footprint.
The, how much did we spend on Poplar Springs the last couple of years?
Oh, I have an exact copy.
She sure does. She's a Poplar Springs girl.
Um, as of, let's see. As of right now, we have spent $198,631.30.
And that's post-closure that has, when did it close begin with? I mean, it's been several years.
Oh, yes.
So it's $1.6 million. It's a drop in the bucket of what it might cost us if we have issues out there.
For 30 years, right? For 30 years.
A minimum of 30 years.
Minimum of 30.
Minimum of 30. And that was one of my points, too, was what we had left over for Poplar Springs to take care of, a problem that, that we all felt like was going to be $40,000 or $50,000 ended up.
Two hundred.
Yes. And it's not done, as far as the spending.
Most of that expense was for attorney fees and engineering studies. If there would have, if, if we would have had the foresight to hire a engineer, design a closure plan, and just move forward and close it, it would have cost a lot less money. But the mayor and council that they had, you know, and along with the stakeholders, because you all were, you know, were part of that process, decided to engage with Luna out of Nashville and, you know, follow his path to get to where we are.
Well, with that being said, that was on a recommendation, too, that we had to hire Luna because of the environmental situation and we had to have Luna, so.
He had the TDEC experience, I think, supposedly.
Yes.
And when you were dealing with a group of people who really didn't grasp, what was happening?
That foresight, man, we have much more understanding.
There is, there is several options, I mean, two major options. Set still, do nothing, ride the contract out as long as the stakeholders as well and financially back this issue if there ever was an issue. Right now, that estimated shortfall, Steve, is close to 200,000?
Well, if the landfill, if we did nothing, let me get my notes here. If we did nothing and we ended up building out the landfill to its total of about a little bit over 40 acres, the closure cost for that 40 acres, if we're using $135,000 per acre for closure cost, would be $5,481,000 is what it would cost, the estimated cost to close 40.6 acres.
And that's at the end of the two-year term.
That's at the end of the current contract.
Exactly.
Now, how much of that, we could entice Santec to close or encourage them to close? I mean, at this point, there's nothing in the contract that specifies that they have to close anything, but per the permit with TDEC, the landfill, when it gets to whatever it calls final elevation, it's supposed to be closed. So theoretically, Santec would be responsible for some of that closure. It's just, it's not specified.
Unless they just didn't take it that elevation.
Exactly.
Right.
Settle the time.
Yeah, right.
Set 20 years to a half.
Yeah.
But they do have to get to a certain elevation and let it settle. And TDEC is moving towards making a lot of landfills begin to close. Any cells that they open and any cells that are at settle. And don't we have eight more years on the contract?
About that, 2025.
It goes to 2027 or so.
Got back silent. You know, there's a good group of people on the commission and, you know, we appreciate letting their output, input be heard. But, you know, when the time comes, you all are professionals.
It's been a learning experience, I'd say. We've all ever been.
Does the commission have a recommendation on, or y'all still?
We're still debating that.
Okay.
We're still talking back and forth, too.
But I think the commission has agreed with this framework. It is, you know, wanting to take it to the stakeholders and present it as, as the direction that we're headed and find out from the stakeholders, are we headed in the right direction or not? Again, I think it, I think this proposal, this outline, addresses maybe the shortcomings of the current contract and that was really the point of the negotiation. It's not perfect. The current contract certainly isn't perfect, but I think if, again, specifies how many acres Santec is responsible for closing, what amount of landfill the Solid Waste Commission's responsible for closing and a mechanism to have the money available to do that.
Steve, Loudoun, the final stakeholder should receive an update or the others for that day.
You folks are the final.
What was the feedback from the other two stakeholders?
Kelly, what's your sense of the county? Well, Kelly, I guess some of the commissioners, county commissioners, thought we should just ride it out and not do anything. Others think, my sense is, think that this is a reasonable approach, but they want to see the final, whatever the final contract is. My sense of Lenore City is that they're somewhat skeptical, but, but again, they, I think they like the general direction, but they want to see the, the final product before they put their blessing on it.
And I think they wanted to see, I think Lenore City and Loudoun and Loudoun County wanted to see a little bit of an adjustment on the tonnage so that we could get a more accurate account.
That's my big problem with that, is the tonnage now, question I have.
And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Greenway because he came very diligently to several meetings and made our long meetings. And he has kind of, I guess he loved hearing the trash talk, so. And we do appreciate him coming and listening and putting his input in.
I do think it's a step forward, you know, the other stakeholders out of mind, it's right here in Loudoun's backyard, so we have to pay close attention to it. And I like the, what the framework seems to be going forward is that, that there's a, there's a closer supervision of, at least on an annual basis, of where we're going and why, with the objectives, we can monitor and adjust as we go along.
You want to add anything yet?
Just, I'll make one, one final comment from Lenore City. I think the process that they wanted to use going forward is, once we have what we think is a, once the board has what we think is a final product, is to have our attorney, our Lenore City representative on the board, Art Stewart, sit down with mayor in Lenore City, city manager, and the, and their attorney, and have a discussion about what this final agreement looks like so they can make a recommendation to Lenore City Council.
Is it free more?
Would they follow that path up and?
Any deer poaching, you know?
They're just skirting the edges.
All right. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Next item we have is authorizing bank account signatures.
Yes, recently, this council amended its code through ordinance to allow for checks to be signed by, by resolution of this body. Here's your first resolution to review. It's, there's five eligible signatures. Sometimes it's hard to cut a check from the city of Loudoun and we put this process and these five names in place so that we have, we have more coverage and more readily process checks and get those out.
Is two and three the same person?
Yeah.
Okay, so there is actually, on our camera, there is actually four, but, you know, not, not five positions, so it's only four people, I guess, or four positions?
Step two up?
Yeah, yeah.
You don't get paid twice. That's what we need, I think. There are any discussion about it. Put that on the agenda then.
Thank you.
Next item we have is to approve the City of Loudoun, section one twenty-five cafeteria plan.
This is something that's done on an annual basis, is required by the IRS. It's, uh, really housekeeping. It does require your approval.
We've done it every year, so we've done it now.
Hold on that next week. Next item we have is the water and sewer department debt.
This is really a moving target, we're moving with, we're working with bond council, um, as far as how the debt structure, we're largely based on, on bond council's advice. This is really where we were last Wednesday, as the agenda for this meeting was coming together. This framework could very well change. Uh, the council and banks both open back up tomorrow, and we'll get some more answers to our questions. The main thing I want to direct your attention to is, um, the different utility funds, uh, that will be servicing this debt. This debt will not be serviced with taxpayer funds, but it is required to be approved by the city council, as a formality. As the, um, ultimate recommendation comes together, um, it'll be reviewed by the utility coming with their recommendation as well.
You have any questions or need clarification?
Did notice that's four hundred thousand dollars in that paving, so, the sewer department.
Aren't there some more money in the budget for the paving, when they know there's two hundred thousand or so? That one down?
The street aid we get. That was a, that was a, that was an estimate that was in the, the C-Mon plan. What we did is have Bill Fag and, together with Helen Scruggs, who's been verified by GPS, went out and took measurements of the crosscuts, and, um, and that's how, that's how this, this estimate was arrived at.
Yep. If not, we'll move ahead. Next item we have are Christmas bonuses.
Yes, you know, they're selling Christmas cookies now at Food City, and it got us to thinking, uh, about what we do here internally. We, this is really an effort to be more transparent about what we're, what we're doing. Traditionally, there's been a, a fifty-dollar check, Christmas bonus to each employee, along with a garment, and that, that changes from, from year to years, from a, from a, from a jacket to a sweater, to this, that, and the other. And, um, that's not only difficult to manage, it's sometimes, there's, there's different opinions out there on, on the garment receipt. And, um, this is an effort to remove subjectivity, uh, be transparent about what we're spending, and also reward our employees, uh, through longevity. Uh, it's a, it's a scaled bonus. Uh, it, it increases, uh, based on number of years of service, as you'll see in the outline. Uh, it builds from, all the way from three months up to forty years plus. There is a, a max bonus of, of one hundred and fifty dollars. What I wanted, what I wanted you to see was what we were spending in years past versus what, um, this, this new plan would offer.
Like I say, this puts money in their hand, they can spend it, and buy the garment they want or whatever.
That's right.
Or a Christmas gift.
Yes, sir.
That's what else is measured. Do you have any questions or comments?
I don't think there's any right or wrong way to do this, but this does allow you to see what's being spent.
Straighten the ground.
I'll bear the five dollar card, he's me. Me, up there. Up in this here, wouldn't score.
If there's no other questions, we'll move ahead. Uh, next item we have, minutes of other organizations. Yes, I, this man, I don't get it. Anybody have anything, is there any meetings I can get to?
He certainly has.
I noticed in the utility board, man, it's a bid for the, the, uh, construction work at the UT building out there, medical centers, over five hundred thousand dollars. Something usual.
That's correct.
So you were hoping it was going to be a lot less than that?
We were, um, disappointed with, um, material costs, cost of labor, um, since everything's gone up recently. Our architect presented that the bids actually came inconsistent with what he's receiving right now at other locations. Uh, we called Sweetwater, who's also building, uh, a, a headquarters building, and they had, they had a projected estimate, and, and what it came back was actually about fifteen percent more, just like ours.
Still around seventy dollars a square foot, I think?
Yes, sir.
And I think the architect said new building costs will be, I think it's over a hundred a square foot.
Turn it for dead. There's nothing else, Sharon, have seen the morning in the audience, have anything to add?
Chief Brewbaker put out a memo today announcing the, the, the date and time for the fire department's Christmas party, which, um, mayor and all council members, um, new and old are invited to. Friday, December fourteenth, at six p.m.
Yes, Sam?
Got a couple things. I noticed over here, a building across the street that was deemed, uh, unsafe, something had to be done immediately, uh, a month or so ago. And, uh, I guess the name on the deed has changed now, and nothing's been done. I just wondered how that building became safe overnight, of being deemed a public hazard, a huge live building, for the city.
It is still deemed a public hazard. Building did change hands, and we're going to hold the new under speak to the fire, and Travis Gray is serving the new under, the notice of the, basically the same requirements Mr. Stone was setting. The ones that won't be done. Travis, has that letter gone out?
Chris is working it out this week.
I think the crane operator was one of the big holdups they had, I think, by the end.
Yeah, really?
All, all signs point to they're doing, they're still moving forward, but we're going to go ahead and, and do our diligence to ensure that if they don't, we have recourse.
Another thing I was asked was to get an update on the truck stop, it's supposed to be coming in, is always seventy-two?
The, um, the developer, Brad Butcher, um, called and asked us, asked the council to, to table, uh, the rezoning until such time as they were, they were closer to asking for a, a permit. He's, he's the broker trying to put the deal together, and he's working with various investors. Uh, I don't know what his timeframe is. It's a private transaction. It's all over.
Just like to thank all the veterans that's here tonight, you know, for their service. We had a, have a rainy ceremony at the courthouse, but thank all the veterans that's here. That's all I have. It's sort of wet.
Councilman James?
I've got a couple of things. One, I know that we have been working with the firemen to get their situation on pay scale hours and credibility worked out. And, and speaking to She's Brewbaker over the week, he seemed to be very real satisfied with, with what we've got accomplished, with the exception of, there's one thing that he mentioned that I, I, I felt like was somewhat disappointing to me. He didn't seem to think it was, it mattered all that much, but I think he was told that the effective pay raise, what it was, wouldn't be, become effective until January, July one, July one of next year. This new percentage that they're on. Is that true, false, or indifferent, or whatever, whatever the judgment they got?
I don't think that's been approved yet. Is this, is this, Sean, is this the way that we're counting hours?
Oh, counting hours wasn't, I think what, what he said was the, the fact that they had received prorated increases in the past.
We were going to change that part of it.
I'm sorry, I just, I wasn't aware that was an issue.
Well, I felt like that, you know, I started on this four years ago. Mr. Brewbaker knows that. And it fell on dead ears for a while, until we got a new administration and they got to working on it. But I feel like that, I, I don't understand why it would be a big deal to go ahead and start that, once we get it approved, start their, their raise right then. I mean, they're active, when it's all settled and approved and voted on. It, it would matter, I think, maybe someone said it wasn't in the budget, is that, is that, was that mentioned, or something about the budget, or hadn't been budgeted or something?
Uh, my understanding was it was just still being, being worked on.
Yeah, but the budget, we've, we've met, we've made the budget for a lot more, a lot quicker, for a lot of the things, and I just, oh, we just like to see that done at the time we do all the rest of it. Because after all, it's been, how many years? A long time. A long time coming, I know that.
I'll give the chief, um, Jason Brown and Stephanie Condon, and we'll put our heads together and see, see what we can come up with.
Well, I'd, I'd appreciate it, and one other thing, I don't know if Nasa is missing or not, but I spoke to you about an issue, do we want to look at that in executive meeting tonight, or what do we want to do?
Well, it's a workshop, and with the, the absence of, um, Joe Ford, the city attorney, I don't think we can go into executive session without him, but that, that's where I would recommend, with something like that, be, with that subject be broached.
It'd be better.
Well, I, I, I want us to do it at some point in time. I mean, if we can't do it tonight, then we will do it at another time.
Next Monday. Next Monday's meeting, I think.
Can we set that on the agenda next?
Yes, sir.
Monday. Councilman Stewart? There's nothing else, we'll adjourn.